Okay, welcome everybody to the record meeting of Hamilton City Council. For six o'clock, we're here in the city council chambers, 345 High Street. Roll call please.
Pullman.
Present.
Here. Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan, here. Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Present. Motion to excuse councilmember Fear for reasons known to council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to move by councilmember Nab, seconded by councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We're going to start off by offering a prayer by Vice Mayor Eric Pullman, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
I'd say a prayer tonight for our friends, our families, our relatives that may be sick, healing, that may have passed, and I'd like you to join me in a silent moment of prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was informed by councilmember Nab that the city of Hamilton lost a great volunteer, a great militarian, Bill Hartford. Many of you, I'm sure, knew him from just pretty much anything rotary, but he was a businessman in this town for a long time, great guy, would always talk to you. Ever saw you on the street, he'd come over and tell you what some of his views were, and he was just a really, really good citizen of our city. So, a moment of silence if we could for Bill Hartford. Next on the agenda, we have special presentations. First one is our coronavirus, COVID-19, presentation by Health Commissioner Kay Farrar.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, citizens of the city of Hamilton. I'd like to start off by giving you some updates on our numbers. So, the testing data for Ohio, which was last updated today, there are 126,046 cases of COVID. Presumed recovered out of that are 111,201, which means again that 14,845 Ohioans are currently isolated and infective. That's the ones that we know about. If you'll remember, the number from two weeks ago was 10,000, so just, you know, trying to highlight the fact that it's ever so more important for us to realize it's out in the community, it's spreading, and so all the things that we've done and talked about in the past need to just be beefed up even more. Social distancing, mask wearing, those are all the things that protect us. So just stay safe out there and continue to do what we're doing so we can continue to reopen. Ohio's testing about 20,000 to 28,000 each day with a positivity rate of about 4.3 this last two weeks. The city of Hamilton Health Department is receiving about seven to 15 new cases per day, somewhere around there. So, the current data for the Butler County and the city of Hamilton, some of this is combined. This was last updated today. The county as a whole has 4,906. That's a two-week increase of 1,293. Those are mostly Miami University students, so that's a kind of a false number, you know, but they are out in the community, so again, that highlights what we have to continue doing. Presumed recovered out of that are 3,413, and again, that part's really important because those students do live in our community. That's the positivity rate, again, that's circulating around the county. They're all being told to isolate, but that doesn't always happen, you know, we don't go around with armed guards or anything. So, the city of Hamilton's numbers are 667. We actually received three right after I put that number up, so that's a two-week increase of 109. The last reported number for the positive cases for Miami University is 1,084. That was yesterday morning at 9:00 a.m. I did not catch today's number. So, between August the 30th, when this started, and yesterday, there's 806 new cases. So, in eight days, there were 806 cases, again, highlighting how readily and easily this spreads. This just highlights again why Ohio acted the way we did, and we kind of stayed home, stayed in place, because when you don't, this is the effect. It readily shows that it can spread from person to person very rapidly. These are all symptomatic people, too. They're not asymptomatic. Hospitalized, there's 372 in the county as a whole. We're averaging about two to three hospitalizations per day currently. We've had kind of a slew over the weekend of ICU admissions, at least for the city of Hamilton's data. We had six ICU admissions. The death rate for the county as a whole is 81. The city of Hamilton has jumped now to, that should be corrected, to eight. Thirty-three of our people who passed in the county were living in a long-term care facility. So, as you can see, these are people still walking around readily around us, and actually, the city of Hamilton's death rate, all eight of them, none of them were in long-term care facilities. So, while they may be older gentlemen and ladies, they are still functioning adults and walking around. So, our most recent city deaths were a 79-year-old male, 63-year-old male, and a 77-year-old female. Some of the key indicators, again, from the state of Ohio's report, I like to look at that 20-day trend, and as you can see at the end, everything is moving up. So again, just use caution, you know, it's not a time to panic in any way, shape, or form. I just think we just have to be very cautious. We have to think, we have to keep that social distance, and we do have to wear masks. This is the county's record. You can take that off of the state. I think I told you guys this last week, or two weeks ago. So, if you take the general overview page and you highlight Butler County, you can get the county numbers. So, there's the county numbers of 4,906 that I told you about, the hospitalizations. That's overall, and you know, you can see each day how many are being hospitalized. So, we're certainly right around one or two a day. We're not as high as we were back in May, where we had those spikes in the end of July. Death rate for the county, again, at 81, that's missing one, and presumed recovered are 3,413. There is a new reporting requirement that you may have read about that involves the schools very heavily. So, beginning September 8th yesterday, parents are required to report if an enrolled child tests positive, and then the school district in turn is required to report to their local health jurisdiction within 24 hours. That's already been happening here locally. I have a great relationship with the city schools, and they've been doing a great job. I've also met with all the Catholic schools that reside in the city of Hamilton, and they report this. This has been going on already, so we're ahead of the curve here. As of September 15th, we are going to be doing a cumulative data report to the Ohio Department of Health, and the purpose of that data report is that it then will be shown on the website. So, that coronavirus.ohio.gov website will then start showing a cumulative total by school of how many positive cases there are. The goal of all this is to report the cases timely and allow for the local health jurisdictions to investigate, contact trace, and try to mitigate so that there's not spread within the classrooms. So, that's the whole purpose of this new reporting requirement. It's a lot of work. We've distributed spreadsheets. We had a webinar today with all the nurses from the various schools. They're ready to go with this. They have an understanding of what we need and how many we need to report it, so we're ready to go. Any questions?
Any questions, councilor?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I do have a comment. Kay, I just wanted to make sure I pass this on. I ran into John Wilhelm, the principal at Hamilton High earlier today at the hype ribbon cutting, and he had nothing but incredibly positive things to say about you, your response, so thank you so much, because he said that they would be lost literally as a school district without your assistance. He said, you know, "It's comforting to know that at 7:00 on Sunday night, we can call Kay Farrar, and she takes her phone calls and answers her questions," so thank you.
It's a great relationship. It really is. It's not just me. We work together as a group, and it has been a wonderful working relationship. I really do have a very big respect for all of them, so.
I want to mention also, at a ribbon cutting at Baden recently, Brian Pedergast, the principal there, said the same things that Principal Wilhelm said, is that how great you are to work with and how much you helped them get that new addition to be safe and in the way that it should be.
They're doing a remarkable job. Our schools are just, they're really into this, and they want to move forward, and like I said, I think we just have to continue to guide them and do the best we can to contain it, and they've got great plans in place. We've worked all summer long to get a good plan in place to not spread it, you know, everywhere where we had to quarantine whole classrooms, so they're doing a great job. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kay. Next on the agenda is the 320 Main Street update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Grukus if he would kindly go to, thank you. And Nick, just so I don't catch you off-guard, I am going to have to go to Google Maps because I want to go to Richie's Garage and talk about that for a moment, too. I did have a conversation with the developer of the apartments at 320 Main Street, had several conversations with his architect. They have come back with a plan where they can preserve the duplex next door, so I think that is good news. It is something that we stressed at the city level, as being important to preserve, and they understood, and they've come back with a couple different designs, and as they move through the design phase, we'll start bringing those into council for your review. But, very pleased to know that the duplex that Mr. Grukus has on the screen right there will be preserved. Again, I think it's a nice piece of architecture on Main Street, and several people have reached out and expressed interest in doing something since this has become more of an issue at recent council meetings, so I thought that you would appreciate that news. In that same vein, if I may, with the apartment project moving forward, the Richie's Garage received several comments about that. I was stopped several times this week, and people seem very excited about the prospect of the adaptive reuse of that historic gas station. As council's aware, I think I forwarded you the email from the architect. We had ordered two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, to have the square footage and some other basic measurements done so we could start working on RFP for the front building and the back building, to see what they could become in the future. There's approximately 5,000 square feet between both buildings, almost 4,000 square feet in the back building, and approximately 1,000 square feet in the historic filling station, but the interest, we haven't even released a request for proposals yet, it's been amazing. We've had breweries come up from greater Cincinnati, we've had pizza places come up, we've had a micro-distillery reach out and express interest, we've had people that want to do a bourbon bar in the front. Several, what I would call, well-known Cincinnati-area restaurateurs have called and inquired about the RFP process, so it's certainly generating a lot of intention. The CIC held a meeting earlier today, and we're in the process of transferring the property to the CIC, since they handle the RFP process for us, like they have in several other buildings, so I'm hopeful that the RFP will be released sometime, I'm guessing maybe in November of this year, and I'm really excited to see what type of interest we get. When you think about Main Street, just in the last three years, I just jotted down a couple restaurants and locations, but when you think about Roll On In, Fretboard Public House, The Hub that's been announced, Village Parlour, Billy Yanks, which should be open probably in December, January, and you pair that with Richard's Pizza and True West, which have really been anchors, at least True West for the last 10 years, and Richard's Pizza for the last 50 years on Main Street, it's just really exciting to see that type of energy, and as it continues to grow, and I truly believe with the apartments that will hopefully be under construction next year on Main Street, that we're going to continue to see that. And finally, somewhat tangentially, we have our, as you're aware, our strategic planning session, our annual retreat this Friday, and I was going back in my notes, and at the 2011, which this side of the table will remember, at the 2011 planning retreat, we talked about the importance of Walgreens to Walgreens, and hopefully you'll be impressed when you see the slideshow from 2000, early 2011, when we had that first retreat with me as city manager to where we're at today. It's exciting to see that Walgreens to Walgreens footprint, Walgreens from Route 4 to Walgreens to Eaton Avenue on Main Street, what's transpired in the last nine-plus years. Any questions?
Thank you for the report. People are talking about both of those projects.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. We now go to audience of citizens, which we are actually reopening with certain restrictions. We have no one who's signed a book to come in from the lobby and speak at the podium for audience of citizens. However, we do have a letter to be read, and to the record, I believe, is that correct? The city clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to be reading that, please?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
All right, we have one letter for city council, and it is from Ms. Lilly Steger, "Mr. Grukus, I emailed you earlier this year regarding steps Hamilton City Council is taking to ensure fair and ethical policing in our city. I'm emailing you again to see what steps City Council is taking to ensure that the United States Postal Service remains fully funded in our area. As the only mail carrier service that guarantees our privacy employs over 7 million people, and the safest and securest way to vote amid the coronavirus pandemic, the United States Postal Service is an essential function. It is an obligation of the city council to ensure that all residents of Hamilton have their right to vote and the essential service, the United States Postal Service, protected. If voting by mail is secure enough for President Trump, it should be good enough for our city. I believe I asked last time, and I can't remember what you said, but how can I contact your city councillors directly? Thank you, Lilly." We did issue a response to her email. "Dear Lilly, thank you for sharing your concerns. I will pass her comments along to the city council at tonight's city council meeting and resend you the email with city council members' contact information. You are correct that the United States Postal Service provides an important service not only to our community, but to communities throughout America. However, the postal service is federally funded and therefore operates independently of our city council. Given this, the city of Hamilton is unable to allocate any funding to the United States Postal Service and is therefore limited in our ability to support mail operations. To address your concern regarding voting, I would encourage you to review the Butler County Board of Elections website to find information on the number of ways to cast your vote, including by mail and early-person voting, and you can find that at elections.bcoh.gov. Respectfully, Nick Grukus, City Clerk of the City of Hamilton." Did you have anything else to add, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to. July 31st, I happened to be not quite running to the post office at 4:45, but walking briskly to pay my payroll taxes, and I get up to the window, the doors were open, but I get up to the clerk window, and there's a sign basically saying, "We have no one able, we don't have people to staff the front window." Downtown post office, county seat, second largest city in tri-state, did not basically have somebody at the window at 4:45 for the downtown post office. And they say I wasn't happy about it. I drove to Fairfield, they stay open a little bit later, so all the taxes got paid that had to be paid. But, the folks who do walk the routes are great folks. I got a great postman downtown, who, great guy, and the folks who do work at the counter are very hardworking. I just wish there were more of them. I wish it would have stayed open 15 more minutes on July 31st. But that was a little bit maddening to see in downtown Hamilton. I thank Lilly for her letter. I know we've all mailed things that maybe don't get to their location very quickly, but not just a problem with the employees, but we should have our downtown post office managed to, we have somebody who's there at 4:45 on a weekday. An inquiry was going to do in Monaco, I believe, about the post offices around here. I thought some of our post office boxes have been moved, and it ends up there have not been any that have been taken out for probably several years, but there was that concern of post office boxes being removed, the ones that are scattered around the town. That's all I have to add to the letter that Lilly sent, but I thought it might be interesting for folks to know that on July 31st, we didn't have a fully-staffed post office in downtown Hamilton.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I'd like to add, I had someone come to me and mention, too, the lack of amenities in the downtown Hamilton post office, such as being able to buy stamps out of a machine, and they said they regularly drive to Fairfield to get their stamps, and that's just one of many things. I mean, just the availability, they mentioned the exact same thing, a sign that says, "Sorry, we aren't able to staff this." So, that's unacceptable for a city of this size, and it has been going on for years. I believe something does need to happen, and I apologized on behalf of, I guess, just our city, that we don't have a post office that has the amenities and is able to serve our citizens.
There is still a considerable amount of walk-up traffic into that post office.
Yes, there is.
I see that every day, I'm close enough by. So, I know a few years ago, we had a meeting up here with the folks out of Cincinnati, and it might be time to have that again, especially if that does occur ever, ever again, where there's a post office just not being open at 4:45, or it could have been earlier, but it was 4:45 when I got there, and the sign was up. Okay, that's it for the emails, letters, and no one did sign the book for the record here on September 9th. All right, we now go to the consent agenda. That includes matters such as approval of minutes, all staff reports received and filed council information, and the caucus reports. Caucus agenda does have two items, official neighborhood zoning, as well as this regulation on short-term rentals. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at the consent agenda and the caucus agenda. I accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that with the acceptance of the items, as noted, council receive the reports on the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, Senate Councilmember Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. I accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion to move by councilmember Nab, Senate Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go to pending legislation. Second reading of an ordinance involving a North End Corridor revitalization plan.
An ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan adding the North End Corridor revitalization plan to the plan. City of Hamilton, applicants.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Take a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, Senate Councilmember Brown. Comments about this? I mentioned a couple of comments. The first one was very well done. The plan was done by Miami University students. They've got a great relationship with Miami University's planning department, and the one to mention is, I mean, add some of the examples of where crosswalks could be with the blinking crosswalk sign, and I've always thought that one would be very good at Crawford Woods and Crawford Elementary School crossing Hancock, because cars do go pretty fast there, and I'm sure that's a much-used crosswalk, but that should maybe be some topic of discussion later on would be where we could have some of those crosswalks around town, because the one at Moser does make that, Moser Park does make that area safer. Okay, any other questions or comments for discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, sir.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 6-0.
We go to new legislation, agenda item number four, first reading of an ordinance involving conditional use for 535 Maple Avenue.
An ordinance approving conditional use certificate and approval for 535 Maple Avenue to allow for the reoccupation of an existing two-story residential structure as a single-family residence, with a variance from the 2-2, required off-street parking spaces as required in section 1137.27 of the Hamilton zoning ordinance, on property located I-1 Limited Industrial Zoning District, Midwest Developers LLC, property owner and applicant.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number five, let's record reflect that we do have the locations of these particular addresses where there's vacation alley vacancies, as well as the conditional use property. So, number five is first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of North D Street Alley A and B.
An ordinance vacating a portion of North D Street Alley A and Alley B, alleys located between Park Avenue Alley and Main Street, situated in the 1st Ward, North Side, City of Hamilton, Ohio. City of Hamilton, applicants.
Thank you. Agenda item number six is first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of South Martin-Luther King Junior Boulevard Alley B.
An ordinance vacating a portion of South Martin-Luther King Junior Boulevard Alley B, located between Charles Street Alley and Pershing Avenue, in the block between South Forest Street, South Martin-Luther King Junior Boulevard, Pershing Avenue, and Charles Street, situated in the 4th Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio. City of Hamilton, applicants.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number seven, two readings of an emergency ordinance involving a replat of Hamilton Enterprise Park.
An emergency ordinance approving the replat of Hamilton Enterprise Park, Phase 3, a replat of part lot number 30305, all of lot number 32175, and all of lot number 32166 into lot numbers 32326 and 32327, situated in the 6th Ward, North Side, Hamilton, Ohio. City of Hamilton, applicants.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion to move by councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call, vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance approving a replat of Hamilton Enterprise Park, Phase 3, a replat of part of lot number 30305, all of lot number 32175, and all of lot number 32166 into lot numbers 32326 and 32327, situated in the 6th Ward, North Side, Hamilton, Ohio. City of Hamilton, applicants.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to move by councilmember Vaughn, Senate Councilmember Brown. Vice Mayor Councilmember Vaughn, Senate Vice Mayor Pullman, any questions or comments about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, six-zero.
We go to agenda item number eight, resolution involving an enterprise zone agreement.
A resolution authorizing directing the execution of an enterprise zone agreement with SECA PAC US LLC relative to real property tax abatement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Knab, Senate Councilmember Ryan, questions, comments on this? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, six-zero.
And item number nine, resolution involving a job creation and tax credit agreement.
A resolution authorizing the execution of a job creation and tax credit agreement with SECA PAC US LLC, San SAC US Corp., specifying and the conditions of a non-refundable credit against taxes on income earned by said company.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Vaughn, Senate Councilmember Brown, any discussion? I just want to say it's interesting, I've noticed at last several meetings, so many of our legislation has to do with economic development and planning, and not a whole lot of cities are that active, I don't believe, in economic development and planning like we are. It's a testament to your city team, Mr. City Manager, and the good work that they do, being creative, and we do appreciate all that work they're putting into this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add to that for a moment, the one thing that I'm very proud of our economic development staff, and actually the whole city team, because it is a joint effort when you are doing international economic development, from our infrastructure department to economic development to planning, and there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work to get ready for SECA coming here. But one thing in particular is, we've converted some empty space we had on the third floor of this building, and SECA will have office space with us for the next year while they're under construction. And that's important, because if you look in downtown Hamilton on any given day, on any given day of any given week, we have people from the Netherlands that are staying at the Marriott and visiting 80 Acres. You have people from England or Great Britain, same thing. We will now have several individuals that are flying over from Spain today, they'll be here tomorrow in our building, and these are individuals that shop at our small businesses, that eat at our local restaurants, stay at our hotel, partake of our concert series, and generally add to the interesting dynamic of living in a small city. So that's just one of the many positive side effects, but...
You bring all those departments to the table, when someone's interested in investing in Hamilton, correct?
Absolutely.
Great. Any other questions or comments at this time? All right. Ready for roll call vote on number nine? Is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
Correct. Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six-zero.
And item number 10, resolution involving terms and conditions of a collective bargaining agreement.
A resolution approving the terms and conditions of a successor collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 20, AFL-CIO (I U O E Local 20), authorizing and directing the execution of said collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Vice Mayor Pullman, Senate Councilmember Vaughn, questions on this one, or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six-zero.
Go to agenda item number 11, resolution involving a grant application with the Ohio Public Works Commission.
A resolution authorizing directing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, relative to funding for the 2021 Hamilton Water Road Improvement Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan, any discussion about this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six-zero.
Go to agenda item number 11, resolution involving filing a loan application with the Ohio Public Works Commission.
A resolution authorizing directing the filing of a loan application with the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, for the Southwest Ohio Industrial District, SOID, sanitary sewer relocation project, and accepting a 0% interest loan if awarded.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, Senate Vice Mayor Pullman, any discussion on this one? Again, we have to thank our infrastructure folks, because they're getting these grants and these zero-interest loans, so I'm sure Rich Engle's a tough guy to bargain with, too, in case he's involved with these. Roll call vote on this one, if there's no other discussion.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six-zero.
And item number 13, resolution involving filing a loan application with the Ohio Water Development Authority.
A resolution authorizing directing the filing of a loan application with the Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA, for storm water portion of the city's Spooky Nook Champion Development Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Knab, seconded by Councilmember Brown, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six-zero.
Go to agenda item number 14, resolution involving agreement over vacant commercial industrial property registration program.
A resolution authorizing directing the city manager to an agreement with Property Registration Champions LLC, DBA ProChamps, to administer the vacant commercial and industrial property registration program as established in chapter 1507 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by, was that Councilmember Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six-zero.
Audience and the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things this evening. First, I was chatting with Scott Hartford via text earlier this evening about his father, Bill Hartford, and I think also about Joe Markham, who passed in the past couple of days. But two giants of Hamilton, and I would love, I know the Journal News is not physically with us tonight, but I would love to see if they would do a story on both of them, because what they meant to the community in the prior decades has been tremendous. And, you know, I think back to, just quickly, a meeting I had with Joe and Sarah Markham in Vero Beach, Florida, with John Gadouli, and obviously I knew Joe Markham only after he had left Ohio Casualty, and after Ohio Casualty had left Hamilton physically. And, but the stories that he told of working at Champion Paper, and how his future father-in-law encouraged him to come work at Ohio Casualty, and what he did for the community quietly over the years, and even when you think about Markham Park and what that has meant to the resurgence of our downtown, again, I just, both Bill and Joe were tremendous people, as was Sarah Markham for that matter, but anyway, I just, I would love to see the Journal News maybe do a story about both of them. Strategic planning, the binders are out tonight with the SWOT analysis summaries. Look forward to the session. As stated, the doors open a little bit before 8:00. We aren't going to officially start until 8:15, but from 8:00 to 8:15 is when people sort of get there, we'll have coffee out, things of that nature. I want to say a quick thank you to Brandon Sarber and the Director of Neighborhoods. They've been incredibly active in the past months. I know there are several news channels came up today to pick up the cube that we're going to be using for neighborhood cleanups, the door hangers that you have sitting in front of you. Again, it's just the small things that the neighborhoods know that we do care, and that we're going to continue to work on improvement. In that same vein, I had a conversation with Vice Mayor Pullman about Corwin Avenue. We're going to have a meeting scheduled. I know there's been some issues over there with sanitary sewer odors, something that's been happening for quite a while. I've been working very closely with the infrastructure team the last two weeks on different things, chemical treatments, filters, they've already done some things in the last year, but trying to see if there's anything that we can do to help short-term while we come up with a longer-term improvement. So we'll be having a meeting out on site, hopefully sometime in the next two weeks or so. And finally, we are having another meeting, neighborhood meeting at Grant Circle. It'll be in former Councilman Johnson's backyard on September 30th. That's been confirmed for 5:30. That is really an update of some of the issues that we did or discovered during our July neighborhood meeting, with speeding, loud noise, people cutting from Neyland Boulevard into the subdivision through people's yards. We've come up with several action items, including, we're going to try some speed humps in the neighborhood. I spoke with Mr. Engel, our city engineer, earlier today. They were ordered over a month ago, but because of COVID, a lot of the delivery time has been slowed. We are hopeful to have them delivered before September 30th, so we can actually show them to the residents, and we can work with them on the placement of those speed humps on Grant Circle. But our engineering team knows we have speeding issues throughout Hamilton, and Grant Circle graciously allowed us to use them as a test case for these speed humps. Thank you.
A couple of things I want to add to what you said. As far as Corwin goes, I'm glad there's going to be some short-term work done, but Band-Aids, I think they probably have enough Band-Aids, I think they actually need some true solutions over there, and I think the residents are, they want to work with us, I know they want to work with us, but I think this is time for solutions. I was at Grant Circle on Monday, and the residents are, were talking about the speed bumps, and they think it's definitely going to slow traffic in there, and those homeowners over there, I mean, they take care of their houses, and they do have some speed issues over there, and most of some problems over on Monument a little bit, too. Back to Joe Markham, Joe Markham really helped build Ohio Casualty, and some of the Facebook posts about him from former employees were just absolutely glowing about, good man. I think about how many people were hired at Ohio Casualty over the years, and those monies, those monies that they earned helped raise their family, put them through school and the like, and so Joe Markham's leadership did do so much for the City of Hamilton. Markham Park, but also Miami University, but I think it'd be appropriate if you do a moment of silence right now for Joe Markham's, as the family has released that information.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I have a comment, actually a question for Joshua again. September 30th, at what time, it is at Archie's place?
Yeah, 5:30 PM.
Second of all, today I was on Corwin Avenue, as you know, I was talking to the neighbors, they're pretty upset, and I want to say that a city truck came up today and did some readings, and I, for the life of me, I cannot remember his name, I just talked to him for a minute, but he was very professional with them. Lady was very upset. Got to talk with Mr. Gattermeyer, and I think hers was Ms. Jackson, and she was really upset, they're getting frustrated, and it was a hot day today, and I went down there a couple of times before, just driving to see if I could smell it, I couldn't. Today I could, and the readings were pretty high. But I want to commend the guy from Infrastructure, and again, like I said, it wasn't Matt Zettler, but he did a real good job talking to them, and they were concerned that the city has forgotten about them. And when I made my calls today to Brandon, and you guys jumped right on it, I did make a call to them tonight before council, as I was walking out the door, and they're pretty excited that, you know, I told them, I said, Joshua, we'll meet with you. And they were, they were pretty thankful for that, so I think you can get a lot of things done. And I said it wasn't just going to be you, you're going to bring some people in and really try to answer all their questions. I appreciate you doing that, because the citizens get concerned, and it's nice to have a team back here that they're going to, you're going to talk to the citizens, you're not forgetting about them. And I told them, they are not forgotten. I think you guys are going to jump on this.
Absolutely not, and if I can just maybe provide a little context to, I know the mayor said a permanent solution, we're talking millions of dollars for a permanent solution, and it ties into a very important sanitary sewer trunk line, so I certainly understand why people are, I would be upset if I had to live with that smell, so I certainly understand why people are upset, but it ties into our Hamilton Enterprise Park trunk line, which is a primary trunk that runs, it's a gravity flow to the west to our treatment facility, which is why it's probably taking a little bit longer than it should, because we're trying to tie in some of the new development that's coming in, and it's an ongoing, it's actually, it's a moving target in terms of calculating size and some other variables that go into it. I do know it's been a daily agenda item for the infrastructure team, I get a daily report on it, they have been doing chemical treatments, I've been out on site, I have personally spoken to some people on Corwin in the last two weeks, and it's something, it's frustrating a lot of people, and there is one thing that our infrastructure team can't seem to put their finger on, and they're not sure where it's coming from, so they're doing some testing at some different facilities inside Hamilton Enterprise Park, they think that is contributing to the smell. I can't remember the name of all the different chemicals that they're in the testing, but there's something that's coming out of, they believe, Hamilton Enterprise Park that is contributing towards that, that we're trying to isolate, so if we can get that removed, we're hoping that will cure a lot of the smell, but also understanding that a bigger improvement's going to have to take place, and we are working as quickly as possible to get to that bigger improvement.
I think Matt Zettler said that there was a new chemical from another company that they seem to think will calm the smell down, actually get the levels down, and again, like Mayor said, it is a Band-Aid right now, but if they could just get those levels down, it's pretty strong, so appreciate it.
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Our city council, I think I want to turn to each other's attention before I start saying a few words. The easy one, Board of Election is actually looking for two people to work immediately, 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, just got to do with the upcoming election, so I'm sure what the pay is, but need people right away. All right, I, we need to recognize someone tonight who has contributed greatly to the City of Hamilton, he's been a great city team member, and he's a Buckeye, he's a Buckeye Scholarship winner, he's been a movie extra for Paramount Pictures, he was a team member at Walmart, and you can imagine that voice saying cleanup on aisle nine, that would probably be really something special. He was a radio host at WSBU, The Buzz, at St. Bonaventure University. And the reason why I know that, because he put those on his resume when he started working for us five years ago. Five years, is that right, Nick?
Yes, sir.
And it really is a great resume, I mean, he's accomplished so much. I pulled out the kind of entertaining things, but what he did as a fellow for the City of Hamilton pressed us so much that, you know, he was an obvious choice to be our city clerk, and to really change the nature of that job into something that it is today. So, one thing, in this letter that he sent to us, he even put in his resignation letter, "My only regret is that I was unable to officially rename the city back to the City of Hamilton," exclamation point. "I guess using it in legal contracts and randomly on public documents will have to be enough..." "...dot-dot-dot for now." So, wherever he flies to with his new job and all, he's going to be thinking of ways to keep that exclamation part, exclamation point in contracts, but also throughout the entire city. Now, I think it's about time that you come up here in the middle, Nick. You know, come on up here in the middle. And I'd like to hear you say a few numbers again, myself, there were no parcel numbers tonight, but are they going to come up here and maybe say a few words in just about a second or two? Okay, maybe a minute or two?
Okay.
Well, not quite yet, how about after you, come on up here, but come on up here for a second, so you can visualize on all screens this special life of the city clerk, Nick Garukas. You want to introduce yourself, Mr. City Clerk?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, my name is Nick Garukas, I am the city clerk for the City of Hamilton. Congratulations on everyone for your elections, congratulations on still being on council, look forward to working with my two new bosses, and we will vote on that with a supermajority of five. There will be a change to the rule of procedure per the charter, the city charter, so just making you aware of those rule changes.
Resolution adopted, seven-zero.
So if you have anybody who is interested in talking in-depth about income tax, I highly suggest that you give them an application to review, and P641201300001700000000035, located adjacent to 1225 Grand Boulevard.[1667.51] Two, P. 6451025000007, P. 6451025000008. Chair pick role was slightly incorrect in his initial statement that there was only one item of contention. At the last Try to Review Commission meeting, there was a failed motion from two to eight of renaming the city to the City of Hamilton with an exclamation point. I'm not saying who proposed that, but if you reconsidered that, that would be really cool.
You're going to like working for the next city you worked for.
I like the way he reads letters.
You said who?
Nick, thank you for everything that you do for us, and to keep us organized and stay on top of things, and we just really appreciate it, and you're a part of the success of what we've got going on here, so thank you very much.
Now, before we do our applause, and before you get a second to say, hopefully as much as you want to say, if there was a song to be played right now, it'd probably be "My Way" by Frank Sinatra, because I'll tell you what, Nick, you did it your way, you did it in a very excellent, professional manner, you made us kind of laugh and smile every once in a while, and your job is so detailed as a clerk. I'm sure you had some times when it was a grind, but you kept it moving. You did a great job, and you have really changed the job of city clerk in the City of Hamilton due to the grant work that you've worked on. So you got to have a few words on your last night as Hamilton's city clerk.
Sure. I'm going to speak into the microphone that some of you fail to speak into on a regular basis. Do you know how hard that is, to do the minutes when I can't hear what you're saying? I'm going to look over here too, with just the microphones implanted. Thank you. You know, it's been, it's been great being your city clerk, I really appreciated it. I never, I never thought I would be a city clerk. I never knew what a city clerk was until I applied to the job. I met my predecessor the first day of my fellowship, and I shook her hand, and I said, okay, hi, Joe, my name's Crystal and all that, and then she left and went on maternity leave, and I never saw her again. And Marcos ended up being the acting city clerk for a number of months, and he tried to teach me as best as he could, but he had only learned a little bit, enough to get through for a few months, so when I took the job over, there was a stack of papers, and several stacks, in the back of the desk, and I always said, Marcos, what is, what are these papers for? And he said, oh, that's the, I don't know what to do with it stack. And I said, who does that go to? And he goes, well, that's your problem now. And then walked out the door, and it was my problem now. So that was like four years ago. Yeah, so I don't have much to say, just thank you for the opportunity, I've always really appreciated it. I appreciate that Hamilton has really become like a second home outside of Cleveland. It is not better than Cleveland though, because Cleveland is the Mecca, and I have to say that. I've got to say that. Love, love Hamilton. It'd be a little bit cooler if you had that exclamation point though. But yeah, I really appreciate it that you guys have given me a long leash on a lot of things that I was allowed to work on, the projects I was allowed to work on, and it's really it, so. Good news is that the Beltline is going to get some more money, coming its way soon. Thank you. Don't know if we can talk about it yet, but it's going to happen, and I'm sure those projects will go on. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the wonderful city staff that I have worked with, Mr. Alan Messer, Ms. Hayden, everybody for economic development, and city manager team. It's been fun. I'm going to miss you guys, but I'll be in the area, so you know how to find me, and...
We call you LeBron James or the Trevor Bauer of City of...
You know, LeBron, LeBron came back, so we've all forgiven him.
You know what? That sounds pretty good.
So...
Standing ovation for Nick.
Any else you want to say?
One last thing.
Numbers, possibly?
I do, this is for Mr. Tom Vanderhorst, who has asked me to do this several times. So signing off as your city clerk from 345 High Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, from parcel number P. 644101000081.
All right, man. Drop in the microphone. All right. Executive Session, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, for two items, to consider the appointment of a public employee or official, and to consider the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
All righty. We need to do a motion that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant for the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project. Right, so moved.
Second.
Motion Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
Okay, and the motion to go into executive session for those stated purposes by the city manager.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, six zero.
Go into executive session at 6:55. Where will this executive session take place?
We can do it right here if you like.
Do it right here then. Again, thank you TV Hamilton for being in here. Good luck, Nick, and we hope everybody has a nice evening.